Yeah, no, it's hard to find the right person.
Okay.
All right, we are live.
All the skills.
So, good evening, everybody. This is the Monday, February 13th, meeting of the Select Board. I am Erin Underhill, and I'm the Chair. With me, I have Craig Schultz, the Vice Chair, Ellen Rosenfeld, our Clerk, Mike Kaczynski, our Town Administrator, and Karen Bure DiMarzo, our Assistant Town Administrator, HR Manager. We have a fairly light agenda, but we will get started. First, we have some announcements. As soon as I get to that page. So, we do have a number of job opportunities available right now within the town. You're able to apply to those by going to the town website. We're looking for some part-time job offerings such as an on-call library assistant, a temporary library assistant, an on-call seasonal snow contractor, a council on aging department assistant, and a full-time payroll administrator. We're also looking for some volunteer opportunities. We are looking for somebody else to volunteer to be on our enterprise...
Advisory.
Thank you, Advisory Committee, which is a new committee that's forming to advise the Select Board on matters related to water, sewer, and stormwater. So, there's that volunteer opportunity as well. Also, for announcements, there are... We have... Our town elections are coming up on Monday, May 8th, 2023, and there is a number of positions available. You can go to the Clerk's office to get some more information or take out papers if there's something that you're interested in running for. Up this year is moderator, town clerk, one Select Board seat, two school committee seats, a Board of Health seat, one library trustee, one planning board member, and two constables. We also have a public forum coming up on February 21st from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Millis High School. This is a public forum to learn more about the MBTA 3A housing. There's an advisory committee that was put together, and this is a forum to talk about the housing choices and possible options in Millis.
It will be an interactive forum where people can make their voices heard. It's not going to be a presentation. It's going to be a very much a back-and-forth. There'll be maps, there'll be discussions, there'll be... It's a chance for the town members to give feedback to the committee and discuss options.
Excellent.
Is that tomorrow? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, no.
February 21st. February 21st, 7:00 to 9:00.
I'm a week ahead of myself. And there's additional information on the website if you want to learn more about what the MBTA 3A zoning is all about. There's a lot of information on the website. Feel free to read it.
And I think the last announcement I have, unless I'm missing something else... Yep. We have Millis Memory Cafe, which is held at the Millis Public Library. A memory cafe is a welcoming place for individuals and families living with memory changes and challenges. Each cafe event will feature a guest artist or performer, time for conversation, as well as coffee and refreshments. It's held the fourth Monday of each month from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and it's in the Roach Brothers Community Room at the library. All are welcome, and there's no cost. So, the next one will be Monday, February 27th, at 10:30 a.m. It is a great event. I like to volunteer at them, so definitely come down. That's it for announcements, right? Okay. All right. So, the next thing we have on our agenda is to open the May 3rd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. This year's town meeting will be on Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023.
I'll make a motion to open the May 3rd, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to open the May 3rd, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, we have some appointments. We have an appointment of a cultural council member and an appointment of an on-call library assistant.
So, the cultural council member, Erin, I just realized I did not forward this to you, is Judy Ogara.
Okay.
And the council is recommending that you officially appoint her. I believe there are two other people who will be... They're looking to appoint at the next meeting, so we're filling that up.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Judy Ogara to the Millis Cultural Council.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Judy Ogara to the Millis Cultural Council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next is an appointment of an on-call library assistant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet is a letter from the library director, Kim Tolson, requesting, recommending that I appoint Patricia Diver as an on-call library assistant at the Millis Public Library. And they did have an interview with her. It went very well, and she does come highly recommended. And I am asking the Board tonight to ratify my appointment of Patricia Diver as an on-call library assistant.
I'll make a motion to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Patricia Diver as an on-call library assistant.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Patricia Diver as an on-call library assistant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next, we have the Fiscal Year 24 Library Budget Presentation with Kim Tolson.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for fitting me in at today's meeting. Sorry I had to miss last week's budget presentations. So, I'll just start by kind of going over some highlights from our last calendar year, 2022, for the library, and then I'll get into any budget, any... The budget for fiscal year 24. So, I guess one of the notable things for 2022 is we're really able to kind of get our programming back up to speed. After a couple of years of having kind of reduced programming due to the pandemic, we were able to really, like, increase our program, programming offering, and we saw a real return of people to library programs, especially to kids' programs. We hosted 464 programs in 2022, which was 43% more than the year before, and added a number of new programs, including a monthly board game night for adults, which has been very well-attended, and a number of middle-school programs on Friday evenings. And so, our total attendance for 2022 at all of our programs was just over 8,000 people, which is an average of 18 people per program, which is up from 14 the year before. And the other notable thing in services is that we were able to add Thursday and Friday evening hours, which was something that we got continued requests from, from the community. And because we were granted some of the Marijuana Impact Funding, we were able to add those hours, and people have been using those. And kind of the other piece of that is that, in addition to that, the person we hired to staff the Thursday and Friday hours has also been doing all this new middle-school programming. So, we're able to really increase the amount of programming we're offering to middle-school, which has been kind of an underserved population for us previously. So, something else that I wanted to mention is that we saw a 27% increase in checkouts of physical materials, which is notable because it kind of goes against the trend that a lot of other libraries are seeing. Most libraries in our network have been seeing a decrease in circulation, and we're one of the few that... This is our highest... This was our highest circulation here yet. So, we're really seeing people take advantage of our collections. And same goes for the downloadable collections. That continues each year to be more and more used with over 19,000 checkouts last year, which was a 15% increase from 2021. And in terms of facilities, one of the big accomplishments from last year was we took steps to address kind of a recurring concern that we've heard about maintenance of the building. We conducted a comprehensive facilities condition assessment. So, we're able to kind of plan ahead for upcoming capital expenses. And it's a great step that we were able to take in being able to plan for, you know, maintaining the building and really, you know, making that... Maintaining something that, you know, is a... Was an investment for the community, to really keep that in good condition. So, that's already given the library a blueprint to kind of set priorities for upcoming projects and be able to plan for needed maintenance. Let's see. We also, with a grant from the state budget of $30,000, we were able to start replacing our lighting system, which has been something we've been working towards for a number of years. So, that was a big accomplishment. And as I mentioned, the hiring and training of our new evening library assistant who's been working on teen services. And she was able to... Let's see, I have it here in a different spot. Hold on just a second. I believe it was... So, she had planned and led 16 events and programs since adding the Thursday and Friday hours in early 2022 and had a total of 164 teens attend those programs. So, and we've kind of seen, like, the population has been sort of finding out about these programs, and we've seen kind of like interest building in that. So, then I'll move on to the budget. So, there really isn't too much that I want to point out here in terms of any changes. Anything under personnel is just the regular increases from, you know, contract... The union contract step increases, contracted increases. And then, we have a separate column here for the Marijuana Impact Funding Requests, which is just to continue those Thursday and Friday hours as well as the Saturday hours that we... The summer Saturday hours that were added two years ago. And then, the other... I guess the other change that I want to mention is in terms of the building repairs line item. So, I wanted to make it more clear because I think previously, all of our maintenance and repairs were all in that one building repairs budget. So, I wanted to make it clearer, like, what is actual maintenance versus repairs? So, I broke out maintenance contracts, which includes things like our HVAC, annual maintenance contract, required inspections, stuff like that. And then, the building repairs is just strictly that, like, repairs that come up that are sort of unplanned for, for the most part. And you'll see those two line items add up to more than previous years because we've seen repair costs go up a lot. We've had a lot of unexpected building repairs. So, this is a conservative estimate based on what we've spent in the past several years, what we've spent so far this year. And I think this is probably a very baseline of what we can expect that we're going to need to maintain the... Just the kind of necessary repairs going forward. So, those are kind of just the, you know, the main changes. Are there any questions about anything?
I'm glad you slipped that out.
Yeah. I think it makes a lot more sense.
It was very hard to... It was very hard to read before to kind of tell what's really going on, and this will really help us figure out, you know, where things land. So, that's good. Needs of capital, so we don't need to...
Right. Those will be taken with my capital.
All right. Do you guys have any questions?
No. Just as I said on the last Monday during the day, when we compare these, the HCA is not in here, so it's really not a decreasing budget, but it's also not growing dramatically either. So, it seems like it's in the right ballpark.
Right.
Without knowing any revenue numbers, we can say it's in the ballpark. Okay?
Okay.
Again, I was going to say, all the employees, with the exception of Kim, are all under the SEIU, correct?
Two are in the personnel plan. Pages are in the personnel plan.
Pages are in the personnel plan.
And on-call, but all the regular... Rest of the regular stuff.
Changes as well, so...
So, yeah, all the others' wages are subject to adjustment through the SEIU agreement.
Once the contract is settled.
Okay. Awesome. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, it's 7:18. I should probably do something else first, or if everyone's here, can I just...
Yeah, it's not an official hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if we were expecting the individual to come in.
He's here.
Oh, okay. Well, then certainly, there's no reason... It's not a public hearing, so there's no reason to wait.
All right. Excellent. Okay. So, next, we're actually, even though we're a little early, we're going to talk about a water connection appeal for 210 Pleasant Street. So, Mr. McKay, if you could come up and help talk this one through.
Good evening. Jim McKay, Director of Public Works. The applicant who is here, he can come up and speak. He approached us... He has a long, over 300 to 400 feet of driveway. And over the several years, he's had a... Several different leaks on his water service. The water service is owned from the sidewalk control, which I've probably told you this 100 times, from the sidewalk control into the plumbing into the house. It's owned by the homeowner. The regulations, which I gave you a copy of, it definitely states that you have to use copper tubing for that up until from the water main all the way to 10 feet into the house, which at 10 feet from the property line is the... Whenever property line of the house, the plumbing inspector takes that over so that the person could use plastic pipe. The gentleman asked if we could use plastic pipe from the control on the sidewalk to the house. And I told him, unfortunately, that's not what the regulation states, and I can only enforce the regulations. There is an appeal process which he's doing right now. Part of the regulations... The last time the regulations are updated, I think it was 2008. And I've had them ready for... To look at, to be updated. And when we finally seat the new commissioners, I would ask that that's one of the first things that they do look at, updating it, bringing it up to more up-to-date. So, it's just... It's one of those things that, if granted, I can't not tell you that you're not going to have somebody in here tomorrow afternoon asking the exact same thing. The last one that I denied was a brand-new home that was being built up on... I forget the name of the street, but it was well-setback at the South Infom Division. That's where most of them have come in and asked because there... A lot of them are set back off the road. The developer actually doing Emerson Place, he also appealed that we could start letting them use the plastic pipe, and I told him not until the regulation has changed.
Now, I've already asked you this, but for the exercise here, I'll ask you again. Is there anything wrong with using PVC pipe for this purpose?
No. The new PVC pipe, it's probably stronger and more habitable than using... I mean, you can only get so much copper in a roll, and then you have to make it, seal it together. Plastic goes a lot further, and it's glued together and stronger than making the joint.
So, aside from it being in the regulations, there's technically no problem with using the PVC? Okay.
When you... You just said you were ready to review these regs, right? And update them, whatever that means. Are you considering allowing this?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
So, it's just not currently in the regs, which is the issue.
Correct. It would be one of the recommendations. And the recommendations were done by, you know, GCG is our engineering firm that does a lot of work for us, and we've consulted with him. And it is through a lot of developers coming to us and asking, you know, why are we the only...
Are we the only one?
One of the only ones, yes. Yes.
What body would be the body that makes that recommendation to change the code? I mean, we can obviously... Here's the appeal, but who makes it?
They're actually under rules and regulations governing the...
It's the Water Sewer Commissioners that were... And we're the acting water... We are acting as water and sewer commissioners, so we could make that decision.
Right.
I didn't know if there's some other group.
So...
I thought that's who it was.
This is... Otherwise, they need to use copper. Copper. The cost must...
One-inch copper, right.
The cost must be crazily different, like... Okay. And do... And were we ever allowed to use PVC? Then they went to copper.
So, it was always copper.
Give me the history.
It's always copper, and like I said, till 10 feet to the house. And then, there's many homes... Newer homes in Millis are built with plastic from the 10 feet that we allow into the house by the plumbing code.
Right, right, right.
It's covered under the plumbing code.
Inside?
Inside.
Okay. And when were you considering changing this? I mean, were you talking about a couple of weeks or a couple of years?
Well, once the... I would ask that the new commissioners take a look at it and recommend, you know, let us review it with the new commissioners and make a recommendation because it's more than just that one change.
Right, right, right.
So, he wants the Enterprise Advisory Committee to look at that and then go back to us.
As well as a whole list of different items that could be updated.
But in the interim, we can make...
So, in the interim, we're hearing this appeal for this particular situation. And until we do update these regulations, we could be hearing other appeals, which is fine. So, here tonight, what we're deciding is if we're going to allow this gentleman to go ahead and use PVC piping.
And if I can just add one more... I mean, this is an emergency-type situation. It's been leaking for quite a while, and we're not... Then no one's paying for that water except for the ratepayers because it's not going through a meter.
Okay.
So, the, you know...
So, what's leaking? The current copper?
The copper pipe. It's... This is on his third repair.
Yes, it's the third.
This will be his third repair. And like I said, it's set back.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's 400 feet off of the street. It's pretty long. And it's something that, if he doesn't get it fixed soon, you know, we have the right to send a letter to shut the water off because it's a leak. That's... Luckily, it's... Not luckily. For us, it's not causing any freezing of water out in the street. It's on his own property. So, we haven't had to send anybody out to salt the roads or anything like that.
There's a problem. I'm 19 feet from the street, so I'm...
Yeah.
I don't care.
Are there any other questions?
No, I'm good. I think that it makes...
I'm good.
Yeah.
All right. Then I'll make a motion that we approve the appeal and allow this... The individuals at 210 Pleasant Street to use PVC piping.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to grant the appeal for PVC piping for 210 Pleasant Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, you're all set?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Good luck. Sure.
So, you can leave before we change our minds.
Or we start talking about the wells.
Jim, you're up again. Yes. Jim, you are next. Review and approve the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant Change Order Request.
This is actually... You received all this, I believe, in your packet, but I just want to give you a couple of... Sign.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to update you on the costs.
Yep.
Which I haven't done. So, this is... This will be change order number three. And it is well number two that has the casing at the bottom, what's underground, is rotted away. We knew that this, when we did it... When we cleaned the well about eight years ago, I mean, it was... It was shown to us that this could be a problem coming soon. And part of the project is to clean both wells, one and two, and to just put everything back in the ground. It would just be a waste of money because we'd have to get... You'd have to... It would pull rocks, stones, everything through the system, and it could cause more damage. So, the price of it is $16,000... I didn't put it on the front page. Yeah, $16,986. And actually, that's a pretty good price. That was almost the same price that we got to, you know, about eight years ago to fix this. But everything's out. It's all at their shop. It's all on their benches, their work benches, and they're just waiting. It's something that just... It was over our price that we could approve. And if you just want to quickly go to... We do have the funding still available for it. If you go to... I gave you a copy of the breakout of the contingencies, the last page. The two in red is... We're still waiting for the integrated security with camera systems to be installed in this one here. And it still leaves us a balance after, even if counting this, it leaves us a balance of $363,034.81. So, we definitely have that in the contingency.
Okay.
And we're actually still on price with the contractor. Like I said, he's almost... Even today, it would be moved up to like 80%. So, they... Their contract is for $1,556 left. I mean, that's just a contract. I mean, they can't... They'd have to come back and ask, you know, prove they needed more money to finish the work. And we're still on target with engineering services, which is the next page. So, I would ask that you allow the town administrator to sign this contract with Winston Builders.
Is this just like normal wear and tear?
Yes.
Okay. That's the life...
It's nothing. Yep.
Okay.
The life of... They're 100-plus years old, so, I mean...
Any other questions?
No, just, I guess, one. When we had the town meeting where we added additional to this thing for... It was about $300,000, wasn't it? Yeah. So, we're still under what we added. It was just to be safe.
I think it was 600 total. So much had to go to engineering services, and the rest went to the contingency. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. We authorize the town administrator to sign change order number... Change order request number three for $16,986 for...
Winston Builders.
Yeah, Builder, Winston Builders.
Okay.
Second?
All right. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign change order request three with Winston Builders in the amount of $16,986. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have review and approve the sewer policy. I think we've had a lot...
Repeated.
Of sessions reviewing this, and we now have our final version that was in our packets. Are there any current questions?
I don't believe so. I think it incorporates... I'm just opening it right now in the other, the red-line version. Yeah. The concern I had was that C1 Betterment, where it talks about 100%, now it says 75. It adds back the items three and five. Yeah. I think this is what we discussed.
Excellent. All right. So, at this point, I'd say we would be looking to approve the policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the sewer policy as written.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the sewer policy as written, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. I just wanted to make a, just a couple of comments moving forward, that, number one, I think it's a good policy. I think that it's flexible enough and stringent enough, so people know what they need to do. And it gives us flexibility to address individual issues, constraints, needs, et cetera. I think the addendum was a great idea, Jim McKay, gives us a snapshot, once a year at least, of where we are, exactly. We update it every year, we know exactly where we are. That'll help with future planning and permitting, which is really important. I think that, moving forward, we need to consider, there's a, so there's a, there's a regulation in the Board of Health right now, that, that we need to take a look at. So typically, when you, as an attorney anyway, when you come across something that, you make a new something, and then you have an old something, and they butt heads, you need to clean it up. You don't leave the old, you don't leave it for the next person. Well, we have that right now with this regulation. I've spoken to John at the Board of Health, I've also spoken to Kathy Lannan, because she was very involved. And they both hate this regulation, which is good news.
Yeah, it's good.
Because it is, it is, you have to read it a hundred times to understand it. And then when you're done reading it that hundred times, you wonder why you need it at all. So, we need to take a look at this regulation. The regulation, the way it reads right now, it's from nineteen ninety-six, gonna go really, really quick. The way it reads right now is, you have six months, every person in this town has six months, if there is sewer passing their home, they have six months to hook up, end of story. Now, they don't, if they don't want to hook up, they can't hook up, if they think their septic system is fine, they, they need to proactively, they need to come here, and they need to meet with the Board of Health, they need to fill out a variance, okay. And if, in order to get a variance, they need to have their septic system tested. Well, that's a thousand dollars. Now, if their septic system fails, they need to hook up. There's no question about fixing the septic system or putting in a new septic system. So we have a couple of things to look at. Number one, you can't make everybody, nobody, nobody's ever come here asking for a variance, but this bylaws on the books, that's what it says. So, this, this regulation should mirror Title V.
Yeah.
Title V isn't even this strict. Title V only makes you hook up when you sell, and you get some money, which makes sense. It should mirror Title V, and maybe it should allow for a variance as well. Because, as we've been talking, it's nice to have a mix of sewer and septic. It's not our aim to be a hundred percent sewer. Doesn't work. You have to have a mix, there's benefits and detriments to both. So, we need to look and to get public input as well, how they feel, and hopefully our new appointed committee can offer feedback on what the next steps should be moving forward, again, as, for, for both these private hookups and expansions. So, in my estimation, we should look at what's out there, which is purchasing more, right? Capacity from neighboring towns that have more, maybe Charles River directly. Allowing people to keep their septic, if they're a hundred miles from the road. I mean, that's the other question, if, if, if sewer's available, well, what does that mean? What if it's three hundred feet away? It's just thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars. So, these are just things, this is the first step, what we've done, great first step, and we just keep, keep on keeping on. That's all.
Hopefully, we get that committee appointed in the next couple of meetings, and then this is task number one.
Yes.
For me, Madam Chair, just for clarification, is the board establishing the effective date of this as today?
The sewer policy?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, good one.
Thank you. Yes.
It's got a few, four eleven, you know, great job by the select board and everybody putting this together. I know this has been a long task. I think as the town grows, we make these changes, it's important. By putting this committee together, working with you guys, getting the, as we see, we got more housing probably coming down the road, more businesses. Reviewing this year in and year out, getting these changes is important. So, thank you to the board and the hard work by everybody involved, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, before we move on, just thank you, Ellen, because you, you've done a lot of work on this.
I wa, I also forgot, I want to thank you, Jim, for staying with it, and I want to thank the enterprise committee for laying the groundwork for the need for it, so, there's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Excellent.
A lot of people.
Okay.
Takes a village.
All right, so the next thing we have then is to vote to approve the statement of interest to MSBA for the Millis Middle High School.
And Madam Chair, thank you, this is another step on the process of the, of the project. In your packet, you'll see a form of vote listed. There's one small change that'll need to be made to that, just because it was sort of a generic for both the school committee and the select board, but on the, in the first sentence, it says the Millis School Committee of the Town of Millis, which there would be the select board of the Town of Millis.
Okay.
Otherwise, the language is correct, and the board would need to approve that, and that would need to reflect in the minutes, and be certified by the town clerk, so that we cross off, or check off all the boxes with the state, so.
So we read this as a motion and then vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, excellent, fantastic.
I'd rather not, but I'll go for it, only because of the amount that I have to read here. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Millis, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority, submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Statement of Interest Form dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, for the middle school.
Millis Middle.
For Millis Middle School located at two forty-five Plain Street, Millis, Massachusetts, zero two zero five four, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an applicant may be submitting to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, which includes two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding, four, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment, five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school, facility, and seven, replacement of an addition or obsolete building in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Forms, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an applicant, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from this Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Mass, Millis School District to filling and filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Holy moly.
Second.
Yeah, don't make me read that again.
Oh, my God.
Just off the top of my head, that's my thoughts on this issue.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded as read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you.
And there's a very detailed, you know, it elaborates on items four, five, seven, you know, the ones we talked about, there's, I don't know, ten pages, eight pages of backup at least.
Got about thirty.
There's about thirty pages of backup here? Okay, I was really.
You don't want to read that.
I did read it at work.
I don't, and this might also be, we don't have it specifically on our website, but if you go to the School Building Committee portion of our website, it will give you a link to the actual school, Millis Schools website, and I think a lot of this information can be found there, if somebody was really excited to read.
Interested in looking in detail.
What it actually says.
It, it really does a great job laying out exactly what's going on. I mean, there's like a one-line question, and then a three or four paragraph answer from the, the, the building committee that explains what they're doing.
It's a lot, but it's, it is interesting.
A lot of numbers.
A lot of numbers.
Lot of numbers.
Yeah.
And it's single-spaced for the most part.
Yeah.
And it is thirty pages, there you go. Okay.
All right, so the next thing we have on the agenda is board and committee liaison updates.
I don't have any, I had school committee, but I went to the library, which we all went to.
Yeah.
So I don't have anything.
Okay, do you have anything?
Yeah, the capital planning committee met, we discussed changing the, changes in the charter potentially, trying to present things in a more realistic way, because, I mean, the current charter says we recommend on any purchase over ten thousand dollars, and some of those purchases are contained in the budget. So, should we recommend on items that are already in the budget that cost more than ten thousand, like police cars and whatnot, when they're already planned budgetary replacement items? Is ten thousand dollars the right amount, should it move to twenty, twenty-five? These are all discussions that we're having, most of the items are clearly in the realm, some of them are borderline. And how do you present items that are up for overrides, enterprise-funded, and routine maintenance? Because there's routine, routine maintenance and, you know, and replacement that you have to do every year, which totals a certain amount. Then on top of that, you have roads that are desired to be done and should be done, and they total a certain amount. Then you start getting into items like, we have five million dollars in the plan for fields. There's nobody proposing a fields repair right now, should it even be in there, if there's no pending plan to do it. There's a million and a half for the Lansing Millis Building, there's no current plan on the table to do that. So those can be noted, but then should they all be rolled into that ninety million dollar number over the next ten year everybody talks about? You start backing out the high school as a capital item, which should be noted, and the high school renovations, which are both carried, so there's some duplication there. You pull out the Council on Aging, which is override, those aren't burdens on the existing revenue sources we have, those would be new revenue sources. It gets it into a number that doesn't give you a heart attack when you look at it. And then you're talking about several million dollars of routine maintenance every year that we have to plan for, that we have to do to keep the town running, some years more, some years less. But we're trying to decide if there's a better way to present it that might explain it better. Because it's not that we need nine million dollars every year, we need, depends on what we're planning to do, and some of that is purely voter choice, whether they want to increase taxes to cover it or not. And then the other one I went to, oh, we talked about already, but the MBTA housing, you've already mentioned the forum, so that was about it.
I had a permanent building committee meeting that I was unable to attend. However, I do have information from that meeting. So, the main topic of that meeting was actually the Lansing Millis Building.
Okay.
There was, the building inspector had gone out to take a look at the building, and I'm severely abbreviating this, but in, in short, the opinion was that it would need to be taken down to foundation and rebuilt in terms of its current condition, and the work that would be required. I don't know if that was agreed upon consensus with the rest of the members of the meeting, as I was not there, but what they are charging us with the select board is to discuss what we see as a purpose for that building, what we'd like to see the building used for, what, what our plan would be for that building. So we are going to have that on our next agenda, so that we can talk about that. So that's something to start thinking about for that discussion. Yes. Sure. Oh, yeah, that's right, you would have been there.
You should have opened with that.
Jim Duffy, three, four, three exchange, I don't think I'm technically a member of the PBC, because I'm an associate, and we don't have associate positions, which, in the upcoming town meeting, perhaps, maybe, you cross the board, you make all committees available to have associates. But, there was no, in my opinion, there was no consensus from the PBC on the building. It was, the roof's leaking, there's a certain funding earmark that I think is in-house, and we weren't sure if someone's supposed to find out if it's actually in-house or not, to the tune of two hundred and forty thousand, give or take. The discussion is kind of, what are we going to do with the building? What's, what's the mandate? You know, certainly some sentimentality to it. I personally said, I hate, you know, I'll be the bad guy and say it's like an old pet, that unfortunately, maybe it's time to put it down. Because certainly, I mean, it's sort of limited by size, the parcel, the square footage kind of limits you, you can't really turn it into housing as it sits, I think it's only a couple thousand square feet, so it's not very good. So it's kind of like unique structure, and what do you do with it? And that was really the discussion of the, the PBC was, okay, we can spend two hundred and fifty thousand and sort of seal it up, but is that good money after bad, not that it's, or, or what? I mean, I think ideally it'd be, we'd really like a plan, whether that's, somebody needs to go market that building to a developer and give them a sweetheart deal to come in and fix it and do something with it. I mean, it'd make a great ice cream stand, but for two million bucks, who's going to invest that and make an ice cream stand or a coffee shop? And those are my thoughts, but, but there was kind of the, you know, can we get someone to fix it up for us? And the, the PBC wants it to be used so that it doesn't deteriorate anymore, and there's some security in that, and, you know, it's put to use, right, because right now it's subject to vandalism and all that. So, it's really like, somebody come up with a plan to go market it, go do something, do we tear it down and build, you know, whatever, right?
Jim, how big is the lot?
I don't know, it's not much bigger than the parking lot.
Yeah, anybody?
It's tight, it's, it's not large.
Really small.
There's a feasibility study.
Yeah, there's a number that exists, I just don't know what it is off the top of my head.
The PBC portion of the website.
But that was for a historical renovation or something, right?
Yeah, but it does describe the lot size. But it does give you a lot of background information, maybe, if people are interested. If you can't find it, let me know, I'll find it.
But that, yeah, I'd like to know the lot, I mean, does it come all the way out? Is it?
It is, it's strange.
It's, the, the architect said even if you tore it down, you couldn't put a senior center, I mean, not that we're going that direction.
No, 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 I know that.
But, but it was, it's just a tight little site, it was difficult to define the use for it.
But if you tear it down, I mean, not to be, whatever, but you said the pet thing, thank you for that, that's, I'll go to bed with that.
Look, I'm as sentimental as the next guy.
Yeah, you look sentimental. If you tear it down, there goes the sentimentality, I mean.
Gets put to a higher and better use somehow, something's got to replace it.
Right? I mean, at that point, you, yeah.
You don't tear it down and rebuild what was there.
No, no.
Yeah.
No, you put a plaque, like in London, this one stood.
You make it a pocket park.
You take a picture, you laminate it.
On the wall downstairs. And the other discussion is apparently St. Thomas may have bought all the land behind it, so expansion of the lot or something.
Oh, really?
May or may not be, I mean, certainly could be a discussion if that's, but anyway, so that was the general gist of, somebody come up with a plan to please do something.
So that's what we'll be talking about at the next one. Yes, Scott.
You know, that's something we don't want to see happen, have it torn down. It is an historical building, and I think we need to really work together as a community to figure it out. I think we've lost some historical buildings in this town, we don't want to lose any more. So, we need to really look at figuring out how to fix it, get somebody to come in, do the work that needs to be done, and really keep, because if you, you can't rebuild what's there, that's impossible. And then it's not historic when you tear it down, you've lost all that, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, so put on your thinking caps for next, next meeting, and we'll discuss that in further detail. All right, so the next thing we have is the approval of the Water and Sewer Commitment, Mr. Kaczynski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, in your packet is the Water and Sewer Department Commitment to the Collector for January of two thousand twenty-three, in a total amount of one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. And I'm requesting that the board vote to approve that commitment.
Make a motion to approve the commitment of one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents for January of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Water and Sewer Commitment for January twenty twenty-three in the amount of one thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of draft minutes from January twenty-third, twenty-three, April eleventh, twenty-two, and April twenty-fifth, twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for January twenty-third, twenty, twenty-three, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the three draft minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So, moving right along, we are now going to adjourn to executive session. So I'm going to move that we adjourn to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, SEIU, fire union and fire chief, and to consider the purchase or lease of real estate, real property, and such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body.
Second.
I'll poll the board, Ellen?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, thank you, Mills Community Media, we will be coming out just for the purposes of adjourning. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to come talk to you guys.